8th, 2021 to order. If you would please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, here.
Allen Bass?
Here.
Ingles?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Falcone?
Here. It's time if we could get a motion to approve the agenda this evening as presented.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support?
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll open the floor for our first public comment. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting on August 2nd and then also the minutes from a special meeting that was held on August 10th.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support?
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening, we do have a community spotlight. Marcus, would you like to introduce it?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. We actually have two community spotlight items this evening. The first one is with regard to a special recognition regarding the donation of bottled water. If council can recall back, just a couple of weeks ago, we had an issue where we had a water main break, which in and of itself is not necessarily a big deal. However, this one did result in a loss of pressure within our system that resulted in us requiring that we have a boil water alert in place for about 24 to 48 hours. There are two organizations that we would like to really especially recognize this evening. The first, and I'm going to go off of what Rich Spicer calls them, Cadillac's Local First Stations, 107.9 CDY, 107.1 The Drive, and Big Rapid Sister Station B, 103.9, for jumping into action and making a phone call to one of their vendors that happens to be Nestle Waters, and Nestle Waters makes Ice Mountain, and getting a semi-truck load of water up here to the community. I believe we have with us this evening their owner, Jennifer Theodore.
No? Do we have anyone from 107.9 here?
Anyone from 107.9 here?
No? Okay.
That's weird.
That is weird.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
They did say they were coming. I don't see Rich either, so, which is unfortunate.
They knew it was six, not seven.
What's that?
They knew it was six, not seven.
Yeah, and it's been six for years.
Well, I'll make sure to get this out to them.
But we also have, and I hope you're Sam and Arlene? Yeah, okay, thank you. Sam Gordon, the plant manager?
Would you like to come up to the microphone, please?
And Arlene Anderson Vincent, the natural resource manager from Nestle Waters North America's Ice Mountain brand here. Just a couple of fun, quick fun facts. They donated over 1,500 cases of water to the city, or approximately 1,500 cases of water to the city. Over 800 of those were given away during the emergency to people in need. And approximately 600 more were subsequently donated to area agencies, such agencies including the homeless shelter, healing private wounds, New Hope, veterans serving veterans, and the Salvation Army. And so, your donation went well above and beyond just simply that emergency, and we're very, very grateful as a city and certainly as a city council, so.
And so, in honor of the work that you have done in our community and a lot of others, we wanted to present you with a key to the city of Cadillac. And so, I will read this to everyone. "A key to the city of Cadillac, Michigan in appreciation of Nestle Waters North America Incorporated for their strong spirit of community and generous donation of Ice Mountain bottled water on July 22, 2021 during the city's boil water advisory." Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, just quick. Just want to say thanks for having us. Appreciate the invite. First, other than running the 200-mile Fred Relay the other weekend, I've only been here at night, so, came early and drove around the city a little bit. So, thanks for the invite. Really wanted to talk about, you know, the people in the factory. You know, whenever there's something like this happens where, you know, a city like Cadillac is in need, and I'm always really proud of the people in the factory because as soon as someone reaches out, you've got people jumping through hoops to do whatever they can to help people in the community. And that always makes me proud, so I love coming to meetings like this where I can recognize those people in the factory that love to do things like that for their communities that they live in, so. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while there may not be a lot of people here, it is televised and will be online, the presentation, if you want to share that with anyone in the factory, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Marcus, while 107.9 isn't here, I'd like to go ahead and share this with everybody that is here?
Of course.
Okay. So, this is a key to the city of Cadillac in appreciation of the local first Cadillac stations, 107.9 CDY, 107.1 The Drive, and the Big Rapid Sister Station, B 103.9, for their strong spirit of community and for connecting the city with a resource to obtain a generous bottled water donation during the July 22, 2021 boil water advisory. So, without these two organizations, we wouldn't have been able to take as good of care of the citizens of Cadillac. And so, I thought that that was something really important to recognize, so. Thank you.
And we'll make sure we get that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Okay, and the next community spotlight is the Wexford County Airport. So, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you. Jim?
Steve.
And Steve, definitely. If you guys want to come forward, that'd be great. They're here to talk about a real exciting, special, community-wide event, a first for our airport, and something that we really hope will help put them more firmly on the map of the community.
Marcus, thank you. I'm Steve Bajewski. I was given the honor to hold the keys to the airport. These gentlemen hired me a year ago, the 20th of July, and it's been a great position to be in. We've made a lot of great improvements, and I just want to thank you guys tonight for allowing me to go over a few of them and then talk further about the plans we have for the Wings and Wheels event. So, recently, as of this summer, we initiated a community outreach program to help bring the community closer to understanding our airport operations. We've done that through several open houses and special events. The first being, we had a group of challenged individuals in, and the second group we had in was from the Dylan Day Camp, which is part of the YMCA. We brought those kids in. They all learned about the basics of flights, how airplanes work, general operations of the airport. They all went home with certificates, cookies, and snacks, and everybody had a great time. We had several aircraft out for display for them to walk around and see and touch as well of our airport support equipment. So, they got to learn quite a bit that day, and I'm sure they were very pleased at the end of it. The third event, which was held a week ago Saturday, was a World War II veterans event. We had an organization contact us and asked if we could find any World War II veterans that would be interested in going for an airplane ride. We found four. Three showed up, three made the trip, was able to make the trip, and two flew. The company brought up a 1940 Boeing Stearman biplane. And what's unique about this aircraft is if they were pilots in World War II, they would have learned to fly in that aircraft at the very beginning of their flight training. So, it was kind of fun. Both World War II veterans that went up, they were just, they had a whole different step in their, a tone in their step when they got out of the aircraft. I think the day was just terrific. And we ended up having the local honor guard there to present colors. We had a lot of local veterans and family members there to help celebrate and honor these people. So, that went really well. So, those are our community outreach that we started. We're looking to continue that on next year and build upon those. COVID took care of the early portions of it, but this is what you'll be able to see coming forward, so. Onto our big show. We have a big show event planned. It is termed the Wings and Wheels Event. It is fast approaching. It's on the 28th of August. It will be a classic car and aircraft show, featuring local custom cars, unique aircraft. We have three food trucks going to be included. We have some bounce houses for the kids to enjoy. Several RC aircraft demonstrations provided by the Cadillac Area Modeller Society. In addition to that, the Northeast Soaring Club, which is based at our airport, will be offering glider rides. And the one thing that's unique about this event is we decided early on, especially with Jim's input, that there will be no admission for the public for this. So, it's a completely free event, paid for out of our pockets and donations and so forth. So, that is coming up. We'd invite all you guys out to that event. And any way you can help, we take the help, obviously, so. Anyways, I'll finish it up. Facility-wise, we just completed a complete crack ceiling project, followed by a complete remarking of all our runways and taxiways. This was an approximate cost of $110,000. It is now done. We're good for a few more years now. We have many other plans in the works regarding maintenance of existing facilities in addition to new structures. And now that we're meeting in person, I'll be a regular here and I'll explain them as they come along. And let me wrap up by saying our doors are always open. If any of you guys ever want to come by, you're more than welcome. Stop in. You can see what we do, what we do on a daily basis, how the airport fits into the infrastructure in the community. I personally think it's key for our local industry and local businesses. So, you guys are more than welcome to come out, and that's what I have.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
Can you share with the council what's unique about the Cadillac Airport that it has that no one else does?
Well, it's not so much that it's unique that no one else has it, but we are unique in the sense that we are shadowed by a much larger airport to the north and smaller airports all the way around us. So, we end up with more cargo flight operations out of our airport because of our length and our capabilities. We also end up with a lot of business jet traffic out of our airport. And we do have a heavy training program there, where we have a couple individuals offering training there. So, that is the blue and white plane that most people see and hear, especially here in the area. He flies just about every day of the week. And what's unique about Tom is he'll bring students in as far as, we had a gal from Belarus over in the spring. So, they come from all over to fly with him, so. Any other questions?
Did you mention the times for the Wings and Wheels?
I did not. Thank you for asking that. It is from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So, we have some flyers here. Yep, be happy to, yep, and it is a family-friendly event. There is no alcohol on the field. We ask that any pets and children be restrained and watched over just because of the nature of what we're showing. The aircraft are sensitive pieces of equipment that, you know, you don't want, yeah.
I stopped out last Saturday, and thanks for putting that on.
Oh, it was.
The old planes are very interesting. I had a wonderful short chat with Mr. Larson, one of the World War II vets.
Yes.
Who knew my father in the old days, and thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, it was a great event. We plan on continuing that. We've already been in talks with that operation. It's called Dream Flights. If you guys ever want to look them up, it's dreamflights.org. We've already been in talks with coming back next year. And what we'd like to plan, and of course, it's early because we're trying to get through the end of August right now, but is, in general, a military appreciation day where all veterans are invited. They will be providing rides primarily to Korean War veterans and some Vietnam veterans. They're trying to get the age groups, you know, from the top down, per se. So, that's already in the works, so. A lot of things happen out at the airport right now, so.
Good. Thank you.
Jim, anything you want to add?
I don't really have anything. We've hired Steve a year ago, and he's been very much encouraged about trying to do, what I, when I came on the board, to try to do is get us more of a community-oriented, community-facing airport, and we've done a good job, and Steve's been a big part of that. And so, working together, we hope it continues with more events, and we will, you will see a lot more of this happening.
Yeah.
So, we thank Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, next up on our agenda, we have some communications this evening.
Being requested to approve the display of a banner from August 30th to September 6, 2021 for the Cadillac Farmers Market.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from August 30th, 2021 to September 6, 2021 for the Cadillac Farmers Market.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Being requested to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. and the closure of Lake Street between Harrison Cass from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on August 28, 2021 for the Pride in the Park event.
I'd make a motion to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages from 12:00 to 8:00 p.m. and the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on August 28, 2021 for the Pride in the Park event.
Support? Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Being requested to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harrison Cass from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on August 29, 2021 for Relay for Life.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on August 29, 2021 for Relay for Life.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Being requested to approve the closure of Stimson Street between Mitchell Street and Shelby Street from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on September 12, 2021 for the First Baptist Church Block Party.
I'll make that motion to approve the closure of Stimson Street between Mitchell and Shelby from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on September 12, 2021 for the First Baptist Church Block Party.
Support? Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. This evening, we have an appointment, reappointment?
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Carl Holder to the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on August 21, 2023.
Now, I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Carl Holder to the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on August 21, 2023.
Support? Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to the city managers' report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. For a variety of reasons that are frankly outside of the city's control regarding acquisition of vehicles, as people may or may not know, just listening to the news on a daily basis, there's chip shortages, there's supply chain issues. Getting raw materials to make product is very difficult. And then, various manufacturers themselves are going through employment-related issues where they're actually stopping and pausing manufacturing of vehicles. It's becoming very difficult to get equipment, to the point where police cars that we've ordered now over six months ago, we still have no idea when exactly they're coming, other than that they are coming and, you know, basically have faith that they will get here. That being said, we're now coupled with a need also in the police department due to the relatively recent appointment of sergeant to a detective position. An unmarked car has been transferred from our Public Safety Director that previously uses that vehicle for both police and fire-related responsibilities to that detective. And getting another car in for our Public Safety Director in addition to wanting to put another car on order so that we're not even further behind in terms of getting another road vehicle out for what I'll call road patrol or first-line services is really important that we get on the ball right away. Going through local dealers and just looking at what was on the lot was something that we did. We also contacted MyDeal, which is the Michigan State Bid Program, dealers that we've used in the past to see what they have available. We learned that one of the MyDeal dealers, one, has a vehicle that would be appropriate for the director that should be here in about a month. At least, that's what we were told. And then, we were also informed by a second MyDeal dealer that they're able to hold their MyDeal pricing firm from what they did to us, or excuse me, what they offered to us and what we accepted at this point nearly a year ago for another first-line vehicle. And so, the recommended action this evening would be, just because we think it's cleaner from a process point, one, to waive bidding, and then, two, to award the LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram from Lansing, Michigan in the amount of $33,509. In addition, to bring out the additional Ford Utility Police Interceptor from Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan, is what the recommendation states. Funds are available in your fiscal year '22 budget, and the communication includes the line item that we had when we had the interceptor last up as well, so.
Do they give any discounts to cities? I mean, there are some businesses. Is that ruled into that price?
Yeah, yes. It's a great question, councilmember. So, the MyDeal is a name of a Michigan program, and the MyDeal dealers get essentially untouchable pricing to acquire the vehicles direct from the manufacturers and then sell them to municipalities specifically. You, you know, or I, or anyone else that wanted, even the city is a, for instance, that might try to acquire a vehicle through a non-MyDeal dealer wouldn't be able to get that same cost. Now, we thought we were perhaps in a position where we were going to have to do that just based upon available inventory. As of right now, that's not the understanding. We believe that the MyDeal dealer will have that inventory for us in approximately a month. If it falls apart, we'll be back before you saying, "We found a car off the lot, you know, somewhere here, and we need to move forward accordingly," so.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding public safety director vehicle and police vehicle purchase.
Support?
Everybody does.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Then I'll make a motion to award the purchase of a public safety director vehicle to LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram in the amount of $33,509 and approve ordering a third Ford Utility Police Interceptor from Signature Ford.
Support? Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening, we have to adopt a resolution to introduce an ordinance, amending an ordinance regarding signage.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Your package this evening includes a two-page write-up regarding this request. And again, this request is to set a public hearing for September 7, 2021 that would amend a section of our zoning code regarding temporary use signs. The communication lists approximately half a dozen bullets as to why we're looking at making the change. I'm just going to read them very quickly, and then certainly, whether John needs to say anything tonight or perhaps, just perhaps, reiterating these points as a part of the public hearing presentation, he can do that. But they are as follows. Changing the number of days allowed for the removal of a temporary sign related to an event from a range of five to 10 days where it is currently to moving into seven days. Establishing a maximum number of temporary signs for residential property at four. Establishing a maximum number of temporary signs for commercial property at two. Establishing a maximum area of temporary signs for residential property of four square feet. Establishing a minimum distance between temporary signs of 10 feet. Establishing a minimum setback distance of 10 feet from a right-of-way line. And allowing single-family residential properties to have up to two off-site temporary signs on private property for the purpose of directing the public to a residential activity for a commercial purpose, for example, a real estate open house or garage sale or yard sale or estate sale type of sign that we commonly see. The Community Development Office did evaluate 10 other recently-written zoning ordinances from other communities when they kind of came up with this, you know, suggestion. And, you know, as one can imagine, you know, there are many ways that communities, you know, handle signs and the regulation of signs in the community. The Planning Commission voted the recommendation forward. There was one nay vote, and that Planning Commission member advised that philosophically, they don't believe there should be any limiting to any, you know, any kind of signage or speech issues, you know, at all, which this does do because it limits certainly by number and by space and whatnot. So, I'm not certain if there's any thing that, Mike, you want to add? Or John, if you want to add? But otherwise, the action this evening is to request that city council set the public hearing date. Or if there's any questions, the council, certainly, obviously.
I know that the Planning Commission took quite a bit of time with this.
Two meetings.
Two meetings and did lots of research.
Was there a lot of complaints that led to this, or just time? It's time for a change?
Wanting to make sure, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, you know, the one commissioner who still voted no philosophically, I mean, it raised maybe some more questions in the other commissioners, so they wanted to take their time and make sure that, you know, people felt like they could still have a say, but doing it in a more controlled manner.
So, we're doing this because we're in violation, right? Because we may be in violation of content neutrality? That's why we're reviewing our sign ordinance?
Uh, no.
No?
Well, yes. There's, yeah, there's several conversations. Let me try to, yeah, let me just try to frame it a little bit better. So, yes, there is a Supreme Court decision that's out there that I know Mike knows off the top of his head.
Reed versus Gilbert.
Thank you. Reed versus Gilbert, in which this will bring us into compliance with. And then, two, yes, we have received, Councilmember Allen Bass, several complaints to the office, phone calls that have come in about, you know, essentially sign proliferation in typically residential properties around the community. And this will help us with being able to limit the number of signs that anyone can have at any one given point in time, whereas right now, it's not. We're not able to, really.
But not limiting what they are posting, but at one given time, how many signs they can have.
Who gets to take the signs down, and will there be a fine if they have too many signs? I mean, if we're going to make new rules, we get to enforce them, then.
Sure. So, code enforcement, which is a combination of essentially three different departments. So, you know, depending upon, you know, whether there's voluntary compliance or not, there wouldn't be any kind of a citation or anything of the ilk, you know, issue. If a sign is in the right-of-way, currently, one of our community development staff members will take the sign off of the public right-of-way, and then, assuming that there's a way to reach the person, which oftentimes there is because there's a phone number on the sign. And it's advertising, yeah, they'll be able to pick up their sign and take it back. Otherwise, if things end up ramping up to where letters have to get sent and a citation or something is ultimately issued, then the police department would need to get involved.
Okay. So, I've got a question for our legal expert. I've gotten a lot of inquiries regarding signage in the community and obscenities. Apparently, there are signs near schools or have been, I don't know if it's currently happening, that have happening, that have some, yeah, flags that have explicit language on them. And can you address that? Because just, just tell us why we're not knocking on the door and making them come down.
Well, so that language, like every other language, is protected by the First Amendment, right? And though while I might consider it to be obscene, it doesn't fit the definition of that language that you could regulate by content, right? Which is why these changes are necessary, because you are permitted to regulate time, place, and manner, okay, without regard to content. So, and you, if you, if you look out there, there is a proliferation of these types of signs following the election last year. It's happened everywhere. It's not just specific to Cadillac, and I'm dealing with this in a lot of different jurisdictions. One thing is clear, though, that any attempt by, say, the government to ban those types of signs has lost in every instance that I have read, and that's because it's protected by the First Amendment.
Okay. Can you, can somebody explain the difference between signs and flags? If a flag is waving, is it a flag? If a flag is paced against a house, is it still a flag, or is it a sign?
Yeah, so that's why we tend to regulate on time, place, and manner, right? So that variation between flag and sign is a very thin line when a flag becomes a sign or a sign is a flag. In either instance, I think you have to look at the purpose of it and then make a determination. So I can't give you a bright-line test for that.
Okay.
Does it matter if, is there a difference between putting a sign in your yard, putting a sign on your house, or like painting a sign on your house?
Yeah, so I have a sign case now where there's a neighbor dispute, right? And so the neighbor then painted on his house a message for his neighbor. And then said it was art, right? And so there are a myriad of different scenarios that are driven by unique facts and circumstances. So when it becomes a sign, you know, we try and define what that means in terms of conveying a message. And so I think that still falls into the time, place, manner restrictions and how you define it. So, you know, we typically, like, for instance, a flag, you might have a flag that's not on a flagpole, that's now draped on the side of your house. Well, is that still a flag, or does that become a sign? And those are technical questions that you, that get resolved during enforcement, right? I would argue that when you've got a flag like that, it becomes a sign because it's conveying a message, right, on the side of your house. Similarly, you could make that same argument with respect to when that flag is flying on a flagpole, that it is conveying a message and counts as a sign, not for purposes of content, but for purposes of time, place, and manner. Overall, then, you know, what the limitation or the scheme under your ordinance is to limit those numbers of signs, particularly in residential areas. I know there have been a lot of complaints over the content of those signs, and as distasteful as it might be, it is protected by the First Amendment.
So if, if a flag is stationary and it's larger than four by four, it fits the size? If a flag is like draped, it would fit the size?
Could be.
Could be.
Yeah, each one is unique, right?
Right.
I mean, each instance is unique about what is, what is the sign, where is it at, how many others are there? I mean, all of those things have to be taken into account, but, you know, to give you a bright-line test on what's it going to be in this case, it's hard to do.
Good luck with.
I'd just like to mention that the recommendation is the amendment as presented, but with one slight adjustment. In the course of going through different drafts, we inadvertently dropped the ownership, permission of ownership for the ones that are, the two signs that can be off-site. And that's a nice provision. That's one way we're actually kind of loosening things up. It's illegal to be posting them really on our telephone poles and the rights-of-way. And now if you seek the permission and get the permission of the private owners, say you want to have a garage sale, and you go down to the corner and you know the corner property owner, you can get their permission and put the temporary sign in their yard. So that's actually probably a better situation than putting them in the street rights-of-way.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending Section 46. dot 664 of the zoning ordinance regarding temporary use signs with the change to footnote two of scheduled as noted and set a public hearing for September 7, 2021.
Support.
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
And I would like to hear from people. I know, you know, if you don't show up at the public hearing, you know, send us a letter, send us an email, because we've not passed this, we're reviewing this, and it'd be nice to hear from the people if they care to speak about it.
Thanks for saying that.
Yeah, I think the more input we can have from the community, because I think it's something we have to address for a lot of reasons, and I don't want to address it for some of the reasons of how important free speech is, and yet there's a legitimate argument as Mike was talking about, the case-by-case really makes it difficult. So the more input we get as a council from the public, the better.
The more we can create norms that fit our community, yeah, as with everything.
Yeah, it's like the, you know, the Supreme Court in Reed versus Gilbert, you know, they tried to differentiate between temporary signs when intuitively we all know what they are. Like if I said to you, "What's a garage sale sign?", we know what that is. If we say a political sign, we know what that is. The problem with that characterization is it relies on the content of that message and therefore is prohibited on that basis, which makes it very hard, then, to describe those various signs other than, well, they're all just temporary signs, then.
Right.
Because that's what our current ordinance does.
It discriminates.
It's by content.
It's the famous Justice Stevens, "I know it when I say it."
Yeah, yeah.
But from a regulatory standpoint, that makes it extremely difficult. And I, you know, we've, we've gone around with these conversations. It's not our intent to infringe on people's right to free speech. That is not the intent at all. But when you have in, say, a residential neighborhood, a proliferation of signs, I'm not talking one, two, or three, I'm talking about five, and 10, and 15, right? Then, then it starts to cross that line into, well, now it just resembles blight. And it's a fine line, you know, and there's no, like I said, there's no bright-line test about when that happens. And that's why, because we're allowed to regulate time, place, and manner, then we can figure out how many signs are permissible without regulating the content specific.
And there was some really thoughtful discussion when the Planning Commission had this. There was really good, thought-provoking discussion, but I do agree that having more people from the public participate in that and truly understand the thought process that is going behind it for us from the public perspective and vice versa will make for a really good conversation, so. Great. Okay, so at this time, we'll open the floor for our last public comment. And I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll close public comment and move to the good of the order if anyone has anything this evening.
I do. The Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council is going to be meeting on Wednesday at 4:00 p.m. in these chambers. I have to make sure to sign this out, Mark, because I don't think I did yet. And we will be saying goodbye to our current youth mayor, who is heading off to Yale to go to medical school.
Oh, wow.
That's pretty impressive.
Yes, Alana Huffer, is her name. A very wonderful young woman, so, so come and join us if you want.
Good, thank you.
Well, I'm happy to, if not ecstatic, to see the maintenance work being done on Viking Memorial Football Field. It's a major facelift over there, new bleachers, their painting, ceiling, everything. And it looks really nice. It's definitely one of the best, beautiful football fields in Michigan. So it's nice to see they're taking care of it. When they get done, it's going to be great. So thank you to all involved with that.
I don't know if anybody got down to the after-26 annual celebration, but it was really good, and I think it's the most well-attended event that they have had, so I think it was really successful. And it was wonderful to see the park filled with people, so, yeah. Anyone else have anything? Okay. If not, we'll go ahead, and then we have to have a motion to go into closed session tonight.
I will make a motion to adjourn to closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement and invite Director of Public Safety and our Human Resource Generalist.
I'll support that.
Member King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
I will make a motion to return to open session.
Support. Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. At this time, it would be appropriate to consider a motion that would approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Cadillac and the International Association of Firefighters for the 2021 through 2024 contract.
I will make that motion. Do I have to restate it, or is that good enough?
No, it's all right.
As stated.
As stated.
There you go.
Thank you.
I didn't know if we should hand those back.
Oh, it's okay. Yeah, you can just short them out.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the beautiful evening.